You're watching BCTV, Branford's Community Access Station.
This is BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of Branford.
When are they gonna do the thing with each one of our faces? Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The RTM will be convened on Wednesday, April 11th, 2018, at 8:00 PM at the Branford Fire Headquarters, 45 North Main Street to consider and act upon the following matters. Will everybody please rise for the flag of allegiance?
The preceding program...
Flag of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to every public for which stands one nation under God, an individual with liberty and justice for all.
I've also been asked to announce that this is live, BCTV, for Facebook, it's live on Facebook. Okay, item number one, roll call.
Roll call, Representative Edelman. Edelman, sorry. Here. Representative Alphon.
Here.
Representative Anderson. Representative Black.
Here.
Representative Brockett.
Here.
Representative Buchanan.
Here.
Representative Comey. Representative Conklin.
Here.
Representative Dakenvich.
Here.
Representative Diadamo.
Here.
Representative Dunbar.
Here.
Representative Flanagan is here. Representative Hall.
Here.
Representative Hanson here. Representative Henshaw.
Here.
Representative Ingraham.
Here.
Representative Jackson.
Here.
Representative Kelly. Representative Lawler. Representative Leonard.
Here.
Representative Preet.
Here.
Representative Ricchio.
Present.
Representative Sandler. Representative Stupanic.
Here.
Representative Sullivan.
Here.
Representative Torelli. Representative Toohill.
Here.
Representative Walker.
Here.
Representative Wells.
Here.
And last but not least, Representative Zambrano.
Here.
Mr. Moderator, without counting, I believe we have a quorum. And for ex officios, we have Selectman Cosgrove, Town Clerk Arpin, and...
That's it.
...that's it.
Okay, thank you. Item number two, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Moderator.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor saying of by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved without exception. Item number three, reception of communications reports of committees and citizen petitions. I should also make a note, too, that our budget meeting will be May 8th. That'll be Tuesday. That's the only change of our normal meetings. The budget meeting is on a Tuesday, and it's May 8th. Initially, on the town website, I had May 15th, but the date is not correct. So, May 8th, Tuesday, will be the actual budget meeting for the RTM.
Is that your final meeting, Mr. Moderator?
No, that's a normal meeting. That's the budget meeting.
We're less than thirty days out of the...
I have a piece of correspondence here from Linda Scanlon, AD Katie Joan Lane, Branford, Connecticut, addressed to dear Mr. Flanagan. Most every town in Connecticut provides a tax exemption for handicapped equipped vehicles. I would like to take a moment of your time to ask you and other towns of Branford officials to give considerations to providing a full tax exemption on handicapped equipped vehicles for the Branford residents. Currently, the town exempts the special equipment, but not the vehicle itself. I've been told by Advanced Wheels and Mobility Works, the two accessible van dealers in Connecticut, that most towns, cities, and villages in Connecticut provide a full tax exemption on equipped accessible vehicles. With the exception of a few smaller villages in Branford and Westport, there are only towns that do not provide full tax exemption. Subsequent to these conversations, I contacted the Branford Accessors Office, and they confirmed that Branford exempts the equipment, but not the vehicle. Chapter 203, Property Tax Exemption, Section 12-81(c)(3) of the Connecticut State Statute states that the legislative body of any municipality may exempt from personal property taxes any motor vehicle owned by a person with disabilities. The statute specifies state's motor vehicle, not the special adaptive equipment. Clearly, the statute implies that it is up to the discretion of the municipality to provide this exemption thereafter. However, one does not question why Branford does not grant the same relief as provided by most of other towns in the state. The cost for a brand-new fully-equipped vehicle is close to $80,000. I'm currently in the process of purchasing a 2010 vehicle. The cost of this eight-year-old vehicle with the necessary adaptive equipment is $41,500. A brand-new, non-equipped 2018 vehicle loaded with a number of options could be purchased from us less than $41,000. While some individuals are fortunate enough to have workman's insurance or veterans' benefits to pay for the special vehicle, there are many of us who have to make the purchases from our own resources. Maintaining these vehicles is much more costly than a standard vehicle, as you may not only the regular maintenance and repairs, but the extra costs of maintaining and repairing the special equipment, which is quite expensive. Just as you can't ignore a needed repair for your vehicle, you cannot neglect a special-equipped vehicle because they run the risk of hand controls failing, the ramp malfunctions, and so forth. These problems are much more difficult for a handicapped person than they just can't be grab a ride from a friend or take a bus if their car breaks down. In addition, most cities and towns do not have working lifts on their local buses or senior center buses because of funding restrictions. Last summer, I was seriously injured, my leg, and was unable to transfer into my car. I had an appointment with my orthopedic doctor in Hampton. In order to get to that appointment, I had to reserve a specially-equipped cab from MetroTaxi. The cost of the round trip from Branford to Hampton was $96. To be mobile and to retain as much independence as possible, handicapped individuals must have their own vehicle. Given that these vehicles with their maintenance are so much more costly and public transportation is unavailable, not having to pay tax would be a considerable home. Consider that most of the towns in the state provide this exemption on behalf of myself and of those who must use these vehicles. I would like to ask the towns to consider following other towns in the state and provide a full exemption. To support my quest, I am enclosing a copy of Section 12-81(c) of the Connecticut General Statute, along with copies of tax exemption ordinances from surrounding towns. Thank you for your time and consideration on my request, and signed by Linda Scanlon. I will send this to Rules and Ordinance Committee. Would anybody from the audience like to speak to this item?
Sure.
All right. Can somebody give her a microphone? Okay.
Hi, everyone, I'm Linda Scanlon. I just wanted to add to my letter that I've done some research...
I think it's time she got a hold of closing. Hold the closing.
Is that good? I'm sorry. Okay. I just wanted to add to my letter that I've done some research, and 97% of the towns in the state of Connecticut provide this exemption. According to the statistics provided to me by the National Spinal Court Association and the Connecticut Bureau of Rehabilitation Services, they claim through their statistics that disabled people have expenses double what the average person has. I feel that if the legislative body in the state of Connecticut put the statute in their general statutes, that they must have thought that this was a justified exemption. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just identify yourself, ma'am, please.
Hi, I'm Lee Heckendorf, and I'm a resident of Branford. I just want to give you an idea that since I know Linda, some of the things that I've been aware of that are obstacles for people in her situation. Regardless of ADA, accessibility has different meaning to everybody, especially able-bodied. We, yes, are accessible. We have elevators, but there are stairs to get to the elevator. The curb is broken on one side only, and makes it difficult to get to a building or wherever you're going to go. Handicapped parking is in the front of the building, but the ramp is around the back of the building, so it requires additional effort. The handicap bathroom has a symbol on it, but the door, on the door, but it won't close with a wheelchair in it. Parking permits are not perks. They're used by all. People park in the bar spaces, and from somebody that's able-bodied, I've been able to observe that there's a number of us that are able-bodied that still park in a handicapped spot and should not be there. Bad weather is a nightmare. Popping wheelies over ice and ruts in the snow are not a lot of fun. Pushing a wheelchair against wind and rain. Plows will push snow where the handicap ramps are so that they are not accessible. And at times, you get people that are a little insensitive, and when it's bad weather and you're having a struggle, they'll say, "Well, you shouldn't be out in the weather anyway." This certainly is not asking people that need assistance to be productive citizens. I know even at the senior center, we have a ramp, but it's like climbing Mount Everest. And even if you're able-bodied, it's rough climbing that ramp. I've taken Linda over there a couple of times for activities, and I've helped her go up the ramp, but then you get to two doors that open out, and there's no button to push. So, it becomes very risky because there's stairs abutting those doors. So, it's not like you have to pay attention, or else you're gonna end up going backwards on those stairs. So, I just want to bring attention to this because I think this is a good proposal to be, to consider for the town of Branford. If you can just put yourself in the shoes of a person that has a problem, just for one hour, and what it takes just to carry on their daily routine, that we all take that for granted as able-bodied people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sir?
Hello, my name is Gus Vandermaelen. I'm not from Branford, I'm from the town of East Haven, and I'm here to support my friend Justine and anybody else who's in this predicament. I'm not gonna bore you with my whole story, but I'm a T-12 complete paraplegic. I've been paralyzed for 14 years, and I thank God that the town of East Haven does have that exception, and I'll tell you why. I'm sorry, your name again? What Linda touched base on is so true. Expenses that we get that, okay, for instance, after spinal cord injury, you lose many of your basic bodily functions. Just happen to go to the bathroom every day. I, it's necessary, I need urinary catheters. I have to cath four or five times a day. My health insurance, the deductible just went up to $1,350. That's a big deal. So, what I'm getting at is that one kind gesture that the town of East Haven does for me makes a huge difference in my life. We all want to be independent. We all want to jump in the vehicle, and I work every day. I need, we need that independence. So, just that one kind gesture means the world to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Justine Gookin. I live in Branford. I have polio, and I use my wheelchair most of the time. I also work and try to make a living on disability, but I can only make a certain amount of... They leave me at a certain level, so I can only make a certain amount of money every year. So, I am demanded to be in a certain bracket of how much money I can make. So, anything that exists expenditures, like for, I have polio, so one leg is the length of a seven-year-old, and one is the length of an adult. So, I wear a two-and-a-half foot for a child and a seven-and-a-half foot for an adult, so I have to buy two pairs of sneakers all the time. And that's just the beginning of expenditures of different things that we have to pay for that people take for granted. The handicap parking, so it's been an issue. It's just an issue. That's like the least of our problems. The expenditures of what we have to pay for that people don't really get, it could go... I could go on forever, but not, but there's so many little things. We have to have grab bars in our bathroom. We have to be able to safely transfer. There's just like so many little things that add up, that those little things that we need are expensive, and they make them expensive because we need them. So, they know we need them, so we have to pay for them. But being on disability and me wanting to be a working person, I can only work part-time. I can only make a certain amount a month. And if I make more than that, they take my disability away, and then I'm dead in the water, and I cannot survive at a legal level or a decent level. I mean, yeah, I make the best of every day, but that's what I have to do because that's just who I am and what I want to be. I want to be a happy person. I want to be in the community. I go to the concerts on the green. I mean, I love Branford, but it would just, this little gesture, like my friend said, it's just the little things that help because it's just very difficult for us on so many levels that so many people just don't understand. So, just please take and consider, it's consideration on the little things that, I mean, just talk to somebody, ask us what we need because nobody cares, I just feel like. So, just thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Jason Gomez. I'm proud to have served everybody who has spoken so far. I'm the manager of Advanced Wheels in East Granby, Connecticut. Actually, provided Linda with the vehicle. I live in Clayton. I grew up in East Haven, so I figured I would stop by and show my support. This is a terrible sales pitch, but it is, you're buying two vehicles for the price of one. Conversions on average cost upwards of $25,000, as well as the additional mobility equipment for driving, transferring, items like that. Maintenance is required at minimum twice a year. So, you consider a synthetic oil change at X dollars, that's typical maintenance for an able-bodied person, twice a year. They've gotta do this four times to service the conversion equipment. I can't say anything better than the rest of the people in this room, but I will attest that this is very expensive. And personally, I called a lot of towns and municipalities just to confirm that the exemption's in place, and I was shocked that Branford didn't have it. I've grown up around, in and around Branford all my life, and Branford's absolutely beautiful. And I was just slightly shocked that Branford did not have the exemption on the books. Our products, the mobility products, are actually tax-exempt on sales tax through IRS and CGS statutes. So, as far as the benefit of just taxing the vehicle as a proposal, it's just not enough compared to the 169 towns, the very few exceptions that are there. And those very few exceptions are just a matter of getting people to speak up at board meetings like this, too. So, that's all I have to say about that. I'm very proud to have helped and assisted and got to meet every single one of these people in the room, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is John Scanlon. I'm Linda's husband. Just to give you an example, coming in here tonight, there's no handicap door at the entrance to the firehouse. We pay our taxes. If you ever tried to push that door and you're in a wheelchair, you wouldn't make it in this building. So, that's just one of the things that people just take for granted. You can just walk into a building and get in, no problem. But a person in a wheelchair, you know, she couldn't make it. If it was snow, she'd have a hard time getting in here. The average person, from what I've read, that's on disability, most people don't work because of their disability, and the average income is only about $22,000 a year. Imagine living in Branford if you only made $22,000 a year. So, we're just talking about the people that can't make enough money just to get by, and they have to buy if they want, they can't afford it then, and if they can't afford it, it's very difficult to maintain it with all the expenses. My wife has worked most of her life, most people in wheelchairs that are in disability, they don't work, or if they only work part-time. She worked full-time for most of her life. We've lived in Branford for over 30 years, and we're just asking, give you an example. Out of 169 towns, there's only like three or four towns that don't give this example. So, say they said, the state said, "We're gonna tax everybody in Branford $200." You say, "Why? Just 'cause you live in Branford? We want 200 bucks." So, wouldn't you feel that that's a little unfair? So, that's the same thing, that we live in Branford, all the other towns have this exemption, and we don't have it, and we just would think that. We would appreciate it if you'd give out your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just to add to, I do have a little bit of data, just because we do some analysis on the sales side. Our customers are purchasing vehicles every eight to 10 years. Able-bodied people are turning over vehicles every three to five years. So, it just goes to show you that the affordability on this side, their hard-earned money is absolutely going to two vehicles for the price of one. So, I can't say that enough, that they are making do with everything that they have. So, take that in consideration. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Onto, I have no other correspondence other than that.
That's it.
Okay. Item number four, to consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance that enables tax exemptions for Gold Star parents and spouses. Representative Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. RNO met on this tax exemption ordinance on February 20th. At that meeting, we agreed to re-refer, we voted unanimously to re-refer pending approval of the language by the county attorney. We did not meet in March. The notification of approval from the county attorney came late enough that we were not able to publish it for the RTM five days in advance, so I would motion tonight that we re-refer.
Second. Motion on the floor, Mr. Second, to re-refer this item. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor singify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The item is re-referred. Just to backtrack, Representative Leonard, when's your next scheduled RNO meeting, the date for the people here?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's a good idea. Canoe Brook?
I don't think it's on, John.
We'll meet at Canoe Brook on Tuesday, the 17th, 7 o'clock. Now, it is budget season, so we'll have other matters, but the matter that's been referred to our committee will come up that evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number five, to consider and if appropriate, approve request from the Public Works Director for the following transfers. From regular wages and salaries, $43,347, to overtime, $25,526, to uniform and clothing, $2,715, and to seasonal part-time, $15,106. I'm gonna read these all in one shot. And then, from rental equipment, $7,500, to road materials, $7,500. And from road paintings and signs, $12,000, to tree warden and maintenance, $12,000. From regular wages and salaries, $7,500, to other purchase services, $7,500. Representative Conklin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Public Service Committee heard this presentation on April the 5th, and to paraphrase Gary, winter came early, and I did put down that winter stayed late, but winter is staying late. So, we heard this in committee, and it was, approved all of the transfers. It's an inter-budget transfer. It was approved unanimously, and I would put that in form of a motion.
Motion on the floor to approve the transfers. Any discussion on the motion? Representative Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to Representative Conklin. I'm curious just about this transfer, primarily because there's so much money coming from regular wages and salaries. I'm assuming that those dollars are coming from the vacant Public Works Director position?
Well, they certainly are coming from regular wages and salaries, and since we're not spending that top-line item, then I would say you are correct.
Okay, so, that line item, by my math, is a $98,000 line item that we have taxed and funded, and we're now transferring it to other funds, and there still should be $50,000 there, or $48,000. I'm wondering, would it have been possible to just transfer everything from regular wages and salaries, since we're not paying that position at this time and haven't for the past year?
It probably would have, but it wasn't requested, so therefore, we can't act on what's not requested.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the transfers? Hearing none? All those in favor singify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Item carries. Item number six, to consider and if appropriate, approve request from the Willoughby Wallace Library for the following transfer. From contingency, $2,200, to equipment, $2,200. Representative Black?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ways and Means met on this last Wednesday, a week ago. This is to purchase a defibrillator for the traveling Willbury-Wallaby Library. Willoughby-Wallace Library. And it was originally requested to be in next year's budget, but the Board of Finance and the Finance Director thought that, why wait? It's a relatively small amount of money, so anyone who needs that defibrillator between now and July 1st may be happy if we get it now. So, this was unanimously approved, five to nothing, and I put that in form of motion.
Motion to approve the transfer. Any discussion on the motion?
I was surprised to learn that we had a public building in town that did not have one, so this is well overdue. It's a good thing.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor singify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item carries. Item seven, to consider and if appropriate, approve or transfer from the Finance Director regarding pensions. From Retirement Board of Education, $1 million, to Retirement Police, $1 million.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, we met last week on this item. Some of you may recall a great amount of uncertainty last budget season. There was a lot of talk about whether towns would be billed for a portion of the teachers' retirement payments. We'd set aside $1 million in our budget for that purpose. As it happens, we were not billed, so we do not need to spend that money toward teachers' retirements, coming out of 1% extra on the teacher's salaries, and the state is kicking in the remainder. So, the motion here, the proposal is to put that money into our police pension. The police pension, if we put this money in it now, it will reduce next year's actuarially required contribution by $81,000. In fact, that money has been taken out of next year's proposed budget by the Board of Finance, and of course, we save that $81,000 every year for the next 20 years if we make this investment now. Again, this was approved unanimously, five to nothing, and I put... Again, this was approved unanimously, five-nothing, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Motion on the floor to approve the transfer. Any discussion? Representative Brockin?
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Peter. And I just follow up on what Peter said in committee. We discussed it, and not only does the town save $81,000 actuarially, but this goes into the defined benefit plan for the police pension, not the defined contribution plan. So it goes into the pension that are the police, that are the older police that are still under the defined benefit plan. So just a clarification there.
Any further discussion? Representative Sullivan?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Representative Black. I remember when we were budgeting last year, that the talk was if we did get the money from the state, that most of these dollars would go to debt service, and I'm assuming that this is a different piece from that, or this was determined to be better than to be used to pay for debt service?
Well, I think you're right about that. You know, it makes sense, you know, from one retirement to another. And there's still probably an extra $2 million. You know, I think we, the Board of Finance, after we passed our budget, made an extra poll. It polled about twice as much as they normally do out of the undesignated fund balance to put it in the budget to cover possibilities. I'm not sure that the, all the shoes have dropped on what we're getting from the state. I presume that Jim and the Board of Finance are waiting till we get closer to the end of the year. I'm not even sure what's been happening with road aid. I haven't followed that completely, and there may be some other items as well. I know we got, you know, some of the ECS that we were expecting. I mean, the numbers were bouncing all over the place last year, so we went with a worst-case scenario. Things came out fairly well in the budget that was passed by the legislature, but then there were recisions after that by the governor, and for all I know, there could yet be more recisions. And I know, you know, the last I heard, the town road aid was withheld, and I'm not sure if the money for, say, the Harvard Street culvert has been set free. That's, I think, $800,000 that we were expecting in state aid for that.
Chuck McCosgrove, you want to comment to that?
I would just add that Representative Sullivan, there was a million-dollar line item in the budget that had teacher retirement pension looking to transfer. That's where this is coming from, but it's maybe been just over a million. And then there was another line item because the TRB contribution was gonna be well over $2 million, if you recall, that was what we were facing. And then there was the other half of that, or a little over, that went into debt. So you're right, there are multiple ones, and as Peter said, you know, we decided that debt piece, we would wait to the fourth quarter to decide what happened with that.
Representative Black?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My memory's coming back to me a little bit, but I did discuss this with Jim a month or so ago. The plan a year ago was we had some bonds or notes that were coming due in September. You know, the budget wasn't passed when we passed our budget. We thought the state would probably get its budget passed by August or September before we, and so the plan was to pay off those notes if we knew that we had the money, and to roll them and refinance them if we didn't have the money. So that's why it was put into debt service. As it happened, the state didn't adopt its budget until well after we had to refinance those notes. So that's one reason we didn't put it for debt service at that time. So there's, there's extra money there, you know, whether we roll it forward, there's, I think there's some clean-water notes that we could pay off, they're 2%. Now, we've been getting 1% in our cash account, so it would make sense to call those notes and pay them. On the other hand, interest rates are going up, so it might make, you know, things like investing, you know, basically in the stock market bonds with the pensions probably makes more sense now than paying off some 2% notes, 'cause we should get a better return on the pensions than the 2%. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor sing if I by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item carries. Item eight, any other business to come before the RTM? If not, Representative Turelli?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second? Representative Dunbar seconded, I think.
Wow, you have a very high-pitched voice, Representative Dunbar. I thought it was Representative Buchanan.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. See you at the budget meeting next month.
The preceding program was brought to you through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.